Okay, we'll open the public hearing at six o'clock. Public hearing is to hear the liquor licenses for Thresher's Brewing Company and the Highland Lodge Incorporated, which is the lodge in Moosehead. So, Burgess, is it Burgess?
Yes.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your business, what you can?
Sure, we won't be doing much different as far as the liquor sales go than Dennis and Lizzie did. It will initially be open to the lodge guests. Whether we open to the public later on down the road, we don't know yet. We just have to see. We gotta get our feet wet and see where we are. So, why meter that type of thing here?
Just your first adventure with it?
With it, yes.
Good. I think you'll do well.
We're excited. We're very excited to be here. Everybody's been great, so.
So do I, and then you're dying.
We are looking for a chef. Hoping to get the restaurant back open as well, so.
Well, we're.
It's only a week and a half. You can't find the life.
You could already talk. I like. Tom just make sure.
We've had a couple of staffs we're interviewing, so we're hoping that the restaurant will open too.
And hopefully do open up to well, both of them.
We hope. I'm sorry, hold.
Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments? How about anybody on Zoom? Hearing none? Anything you'd like to add?
I never said. We're excited to be here and excited to have to know everyone, so we look forward to this.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Thresher's Brewing Company. Mr. Sinaki or Ms. Hello?
Aaron.
Maybe you should.
Aaron, can you hear us?
I can now, yeah. You guys were really, really low volume.
Oh, Aaron. So would you like to tell us a little bit about your business?
Um, yes. Thresher's Brewing Company, we're founded in 2016 in Searsmont. And currently they're three owners, Scott and his wife Nicole and I. And I stepped in about a year and a half ago and had the idea to open in Greenville because it's one of my favorite places in the world. And I've been a weekend person up there for about four and a half years now. So I bought the building on Pritham Ave and that's what we've been doing is renovating.
Any special plans you want to tell us about or?
Um, well, the, one of the biggest things we're going to be doing is rotating food menu. So kind of filling in cuisine where we don't have in Greenville right now, like some ethnic stuff, Thai, Chinese, Mexican, things like that. But we will have, we're planning on full service bar upstairs and a also tap lines downstairs. So actually two different bars. Yeah, it's really, really psyched. I'd love to give you guys a tour, but I'm not there. I'm in our brewery in Searsmont right now.
Well, sometime you're in town, I'd love to take a look.
I've already invited myself.
After they open our.
Yeah, this is how you go. We've already invited ourselves. We talked to you.
When are you planning on opening here?
Um, I think we have a couple of months of renovation to go. So probably gonna shoot for June to be realistic because we still have to do the whole kitchen. Scott is actually there right now with the building, sanding all of the floors that we put in. It's been a lot of work.
Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Hearing done? Is there anything you'd like to add for us or?
I can barely hear you guys. It's almost impossible to hear.
Really? I just said, is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, nope, not really. This is just a formality to get everything through to the state. We got the first approval on the planning board and we just need the selectmen approval and then we can put through the liquor license. And the states, they're just pretty much standing by for that.
Well, good, well, welcome. I think you'll do well there. Good to spend.
Aaron, this is Rocky. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Um, when, when, when and if the liquor license gets signed tonight, do you want me to mail it down to Searsmont?
Um, you can, yeah, you can mail it if you want, but you can, you can only just scan it and email it to me as well.
Oh, okay. Scan it and email it to you back. Okay, I can do it. Which way? I'll scan it and then I'll mail it to you. How's that?
Okay, or I can have Scott pick it up too because he's going to be up there until the weekend. And I'll be up there, I think tomorrow. So one of us can pick it up. Save you a day.
I guess we're all set. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We look, we look forward to seeing everybody.
Well, we look forward to having you.
Awesome. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right. Yep. You can mute them. Okay, we'll file a meeting to order at 6:30. If you can't, some press and release please.
I believe this is divided in the United States of America, a civil republic, which stands one nation, united in our common justice, or.
Has anybody got any conflict of interest with anything that's on the agenda? We have a minute of the March 17th meeting. If everybody has a chance to go over.
Okay, good.
Questions, comments? Hearing done? All votes in favor? Out there? Addition, deletion?
Now, we have one addition, Harry Ward, also known as E S to us. We have an update on this and they vote hopefully to accept it then tonight. I'd like to meet them nine eight, please.
All votes in favor? Out there? Liquor license approval, Thresher's Brewing Company and the Highland Lodge Incorporated, which is the lodge at Moosehead. We had a public hearing and heard from both parties. You had a chance to look at those, I assume? Do I have any kinds of motion or questions or?
I didn't make the public hearing, so I don't think.
Well, you've, you've looked at the.
Oh, yeah, so there was anything that came up during the public hearing.
No, they just gave us some information on what they were going to do that sort of thing. Be interesting.
So move.
Do you have any questions or comments here? Uh, well, in favor of these two liquor licenses? Five zero. County tax approval. Licenses.
We want approved.
How crypt. I'm here and just pass it on. Do you want to start with the county tax or wait till we get them? Because the rest of this stuff is more like.
Is there a long list?
Yeah, the rest, the next nine of them, all mine.
One, one, two, three, four.
Four of them?
Four pages to.
Maybe can you explain what they are and we can sign them after or is that not appropriate?
You can do that. You guys are going to command line them.
No, I meant tonight after the meeting.
Yeah, sure. You want to do the that one? Do you want to do the counting thing first for that one and then do all the rest of the master list? Unless you want to go home.
That's a given.
I'll make sure they get signed before they leave.
All right.
Rather than hold up.
I'll just explain everything and then you can sign everything after, okay?
Rather than hold up to all meetings.
Wait, okay. The second thing that we've got is the county tax, which is $515,450. All that amount.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I got a couple. What was your last discussion with the county manager? Or have you had? I know when.
About the tax?
The tax and their budget is done. I know that when we first saw it, I looked at Lieutenant Fules by email. Was there any other, any other updated stuff?
I don't believe any of this question with about tax itself. It was, it was on, um, something else I spoke about recently, recently told me.
In the driver's work, their new sheriff's office in Guilford, was that one of the drivers?
No, because that ended up being.
That was only, it was salaries.
One of the big drivers was Bridge up at Frenchtown Field.
Right, and I remember you was in, but we didn't have anybody on the.
Somebody should do that next year. Somebody should get on that. It's a pretty short list commitment. I think it ends up being four or five leaving and.
Four times in the morning.
In the evening. And I think it's really important that one of the four numbers be on that.
Was there anybody else from even the Somerset? I know that one was around Somerset. I know it went with, uh, Scott Snell was on that committee in previous years.
Scott Snell still does.
I don't know. I don't know who's on that committee.
Representatives from every town but Greenham.
It's hard to make them, I mean, the.
Yeah.
But.
I think so, the McDonald's, that.
Total reality. There, there's a higher success or best of the highest, except the highest and probably soon to be the highest.
No doubt.
I guess we just need to want to.
Anybody else? Has any question? No? Okay, Aaron.
Uh, the next thing I have is a land installment contract. Um, it's for somebody that their property falls into the town. We set a payment plan last night I have and I need you to sign that, so you get recorded and don't. Kind of that. And then I have three quick claim deeds for people who have paid their taxes in full. Very good. So I need those signs and get those recorded and do it as well. So that's all what is.
You don't, you don't use that little, you don't use that little book anymore? We used to have a book.
That's a basement.
Oh, that's a basement.
Yeah, that's a basement.
I see.
That's a different.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's the general assistance ordinance that needs to be signed.
Are incentives to the state standard language for that from?
I believe so. I don't deal with that. Um, that's, I believe it's the ordinance company state, yes.
Yeah, like then.
That's a, that's a, that's a coverage.
I don't want to take them.
It would be helpful for me if you took them one at a time with these. I don't, it doesn't matter what equipment I've got three, but each of these individuals.
Why don't you, why don't you tell us what's going to do and then we'll, and we'll vote on it.
First is the county tax.
Any questions or comments on that? Who made the motion to answer? All votes in favor? Five zero.
Uh, next is a land installment contract with, uh, that would be the Susan Blunt. That's the one that we took her property. And she set up a contract with us to pay back every month. Make a motion, we expect her.
At a second. All votes in favor?
And the next one is the free quick claim deeds that I have. Do you want the names?
No.
They're painful. They're painful.
No, maybe a moment. For a second. Misses? All votes in favor? Five zero.
And the general assistance ordinance.
Any questions, comments on that?
Make a motion to the court.
For a second? No? All votes in favor? Five zero.
Mike, did you find that, um, applications for assistance was up this year or?
Did that mean?
Did you find that applications for assistance was up this year?
No.
No?
No, we weren't up.
Good.
We had several people to make for fuel, heating assistance. There are few people for general assistance.
Yeah, good.
If you don't give those to me, I'll make sure they get signed before they.
I'm saying mostly.
Oh, you're going to say, oh, okay.
I'm going to say.
Okay. So we have nine A, P E F, okay, Lee Ward.
Okay, so, uh, Haley Ward, uh, Justine and Chip are on, on Zoom with us. And they want to update us, um, as far as the road construction. Prices have moved a little bit. And I want to talk about either voting on accepting the, uh, bid for Snowman Construction. So we all, each have a copy of, um, letter that I was sent through email, uh, one yesterday and two today. And the one today really, the one today really explains, um, the Washington making streets and the blocks and what's involved in it. And how we're, we're a project when it comes to the ball. So, Chip, do you want to explain it a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, folks, for having us unfortunately, um, quarantined right now, so I, I can't attend meetings at this point. But anyway, regardless, I think we did have a successful bid process for those two roads. As you may recall, that in the beginning of February, we had a discussion on total scope of projects that we were going to put out to bid in order to meet, meet, meet budget. And frankly, that's what the, uh, the, the memo that we sent today and the associated table, what it goes down through is, is just going back through the history of how we got to where we are. And I guess that's, that's where I'd start is, uh, you know, we, we, we estimated the projects utilizing average unit prices that we obtained from contractors, uh, both in and out of the area. And we came up with a construction cost number of, of 1.2 million, uh, 1,262,750. As you see, the actual bid for that work came in at 1,291,595. The, uh, which frankly is, is pretty close bidding. I think what we're experiencing, there, there are two factors that, uh, we're seeing bids come in higher than expected. One of them is the fact that contractors basically have full loads of work. So they're picking and choosing their jobs and when they choose one, they put prices to it that they, they feel comfortable with, that they're going to make money on. I think, again, you did have a good bid process. We've got four bids. Two were quite high and in the same neighborhood and the other two were within thirty, uh, four, $60,000, I believe. And so I think you had good representative, representative bidding. The, uh, the Snowman bid, which we're recommending that we award to, um, brought us in for total project costs of thirty thousand, 34,000 over budget. So what we're proposing in our recommendation to, of award is to take out the surface pavement, which is approximately $70,000, remove that from the, uh, the project. And hopefully there could be some cost savings realized during the work. And we might be able to put part or all of that surface pavement back in. The, uh, the other piece that obviously I talk about in the memo is we're with the, uh, we're proposing to, um, to supply some construction administration and monitoring support during the project. One thing you'll notice on that, that sheet that has the different tables on it, we were, we had planned that there'd be approximately $41,500 in construction administration and monitoring. What we've worked out with Mike and Ted is to have them do the day, day, day-to-day observations and reduce that cost. And so we've, we're proposing that basically we would support those efforts, um, providing, um, site visits, which Justine will do on a weekly basis and being able to help assist with putting pay requisitions together and making recommended, recommendations as far as pavement goes throughout the project. And those are, that, that's based on assuming the project is going to take 12 weeks. It may go quicker than that. We may find that we don't need to have Justine up there that often. So there could be potential savings seen, seen there as well. I think when you look at that bottom table, um, less the surface pavement, we've created a contingency of $11,200, which on a project of this type is not very much. But I also think, um, that would, there, there could be savings along the way, as I mentioned before, that, that the contractor may be able to help us build that a little bit. We did have discussions with the contractor about this. In, in that, that conversation, we actually asked him if he saw if there are any elements of the design that he thought could come out. And what he said to us was basically we've designed the project appropriately, appropriately in his eyes and that, um, the only other savings that you could potentially do is to shorten the length, length of the jobs, the two streets. And so I think what we should do is award the project, move forward with implementation, start the work on Lakeview and, uh, basically see how, how that piece goes and then work our way towards Washington Street and work up that street. There has been mention of the potential for cordwood on Lakeview. We didn't do borings or that type of subsurface investigation. I don't see any evidence of that in the surface, but I think that's really, at this point, the only big risk that I see as far as extra costs. So that being said, I guess I, Justine, if I've left anything out, if you would chime in.
I, I think you got everything that, you know, I would think to mention, Chip.
So, so the surface pavement is a top layer. A finished, a finished layer of the hot block. They put on a vinyl coat and then, then it's a top layer one. That's what we're talking about. So hopefully in terms of how we, even with the next volume, uh, going forward, we can have that done after we've had next, next volume.
Thanks for explaining that, Mike. And something we mentioned in the memo is that towns often delay the process of installing the surface pavement because it allows an opportunity for trenches and subsurface gravels to settle. And then you can come back in at a later date and put the surface on after settlement and, and create one, one uniform, smooth surface. So there's actually a benefit to delaying that surface pavement.
And actually I'll add to that. That was my practice when I was in Bar Harbor for, as public works director for 23 years. That's the typical way that I bid out jobs and bid them. Just the other thing in that area, what typically happened is you would pave a street and then someone's asking for a road opening permit to open up that street and put some sort of utility in some sort of sewer connection or water connection. So we always delayed that for a year or two after the major work was done.
I know Snowman, I mean, his projects that's listed here, none of them are paving.
Yeah, he's, uh, Snowman Construction is, is basically a general contractor and he subcontract's the paving out.
Did he do the corner down between us and, and Monson?
That's more, that's more than.
I know, um, and I can't, forgive me, I can't remember the project name off the top of my head, but he mentioned, Mike, that, that he had done a project on Pritham Avenue very recently and you had helped through the coordination of that. So maybe you can recall what that project was. But he also worked on the landfill project a few years back. And he's pretty, pretty well-known in our firm and has a great reputation and does good work, is reliable, very professional, has reliable equipment. That's the overall feedback. I haven't heard one, one bad, bad thing about him, so.
So he, he put a water line in across, put it out on the dark side. Remember the night? He worked with dark side, I've heard of that. No, this side of the line.
The big D?
The big D.
A little bit. Questions, comments?
Well, I got to tell you, I'm pretty disappointed.
Yeah, I agree. Every time they go back, it's more money.
It's, yeah, no, it's.
Is that what you're disappointed in us?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we had a good process in place. Um, you know, the fact that we're now, we're going to have to tell the taxpayer again that, you know, you're not going to get your road finished. It's just, this is so frustrating. And Mike, there's no other opportunities available to us?
Um, I, I expressed my concerns like you said, I called them last week about this. I mentioned all the projections with the price going up and the time, the time we chatted about it, it keeps going up. So, um, we chatted about the possibility of, uh, the cordless in Lakeview Street and the 1% compensation that we have. Probably cover that if any extra. You don't know if you start digging in the ground or something.
I don't get that, right?
So, um, you know, the, the additional drainage engineering for the lakeside pipe across, that was, that was addition over and above what we talked about in the very beginning of this. The easement work was tied into the Prospect Street coming down to the, uh, the private properties. The drainage to come down to next to, um, here on Lumber and that kind of.
But we never talked about that.
So that was all included in the project. That we were doing the five streets. That we were doing the, the five streets at the beginning. So, but that's included because they did the work. It's done, but that, that part comes out. So you can't take that out, it's, it's already completed.
So that, that doesn't affect in this pricing?
Yes, it does, it's right there.
You're saying the planning is all done, the paving, please?
That's correct.
That's, that's intended, so. Even though those roads don't be set?
Once that's, right, once the road is ready to roll, it should be all set. Am I correct with saying that, Justine?
Yes, you are correct, Mike. Those roads are designed.
And, and I would add to that, that, uh, we did stick to our lump sum price for the design of all those roads, even though there was additional drainage designed in that work that wasn't anticipated. So you guys are in a very good spot as far as be, being able to move those projects forward and, uh, when you're ready to bid them. I think, uh, obviously, uh, there's some work, some coordination to do with town staff, I think, uh, would be a likely step, um, once, um, either we've completed Washington or Lakeview or if the bond passes in June.
I, I think we can complete Lakeview and Washington and surface, the surface pavement will, will be like it's hanging in here, so to speak, to make sure we're not, and if we have to, uh, the, the, um, contingency, we're obligated by thirty-four thousand dollars, if we have to, you can, you can take that out of the, uh, make it a CIP and put that in the warrant article where the town can approve, um, the funds to come out of the, some balance moving to the CIP, then you can, you can take care.
But if it's better to wait for the second layer anyway, if that's a better practice, then why wouldn't we do that?
Right. You know, we, we went, we went into this, the five streets, right? They, they did all the evaluations of the town, women and five streets. And we took the price from the assessment. It wasn't, it wasn't the price from, um, an estimate. It was, it was a draft assessment we went with. We picked the five streets, definitely picked the five streets that were the highest, or the most problematic in a certain area, and that was among the perfecting line. So that's why we put that bond in for them on the line. Something, I mean.
Right, we had that discussion, and, and I mean, they, and they did the presentation.
Exactly. I'm just trying to recap what we've probably kept at this point. But now, it seems like the prices have increased, and, um, so we are.
So you, uh, you talking about the second, the second surface for all the paving? None of that would be done?
Just those two streets.
Those, but those two streets, the whole project, right?
What's the wait time between those layers? I mean, we have a pretty short window here.
Right.
So, Justine, what, what's the wait time?
Between, uh, installing the surface pavement and the base pavement? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So if we, if we use this, this method, you can wait one or two freeze thaw cycles to allow the, the trenches and gravels to settle.
So be confident. What, what, could you repeat that, please?
Are, are you talking to me, Mike?
No, it's Gino.
Oh, sorry, Gino. Yep, yeah, I said if you wanna, if you're waiting for gravels and utilities to settle, you can wait one or two freeze thaw cycles, so two winters.
I'll add to that, that, uh, of course, it's a different climate down along the coast. But I waited, I've, I've waited five years between putting the surface on and when the binder went down. Binder pavement.
Right, right, we, we don't have to wait that long. Right. You know, and like I said, we have another bond that's coming up in town, we, so if we, we have that covered, by the time they're, they're almost done, we'll have that, if, if it's approved.
And, and why isn't Washington Street being done first? That was promised for two years, and still hasn't done.
Well, we have to, we have to get Lakeview done.
Why?
At least, at least with a pipe in this, because the park, the EPCs have their parks, constructed this summer as well. And we can't be down there helping each other. So the thought was, currently coming on, on Zoom, that, that when I get that, that drainage pipe in, that initial work that's beginning on Lakeview Street, is that correct?
Correct. Our, our, our sense, um, was to direct the contractor to start on Lakeview, so we got that storm pipe connected to the, uh, from the old stone culvert across the park area, so that that project could proceed with the upgrade this summer. We, there's certainly flexibility, um, and, and this may be an area of, uh, that we discussed with the contractor. If he wanted to escalate the, the production rate, maybe he would increase his crew size and be able to work on both streets at once. I, my sense is, in talking with him the other day, I don't know that he's got that much depth at this point. I know he was finishing up a big project this spring, and the fact that we, um, gave him more time to bid this, uh, to complete this work, get it done by the end of July, um, that, uh, that was attractive to him. And so I think that got him a little bit more aggressive with the bidding. There's another element that I didn't get into the details on that's, that's occurring statewide. Subcontractors and suppliers for these construction companies are, um, I call it pandemic pricing, because there's uncertainty in the fact that they may be able to get the materials or have them in stock when they're needed. The prices of some of these materials are going up, uh, for the contractors. So, um, that element is certainly new in the, the day of age that we're at. But again, I think you did get competitive bidding, um, and you've got a good contractor who's, who's willing to do the work.
So what if it's not done by July, I heard first?
So that's substantial completion date. We put a penalty in there of a thousand dollars a day, that if, if they go beyond that schedule, um, we can do what's called liquidated damages against them. And how you keep that money is, every time that there's a pay requisition, there's what's called retainage withheld from that requisition. It's five percent of what that payment is. And so you basically save up a bank account, um, that you can utilize to, you know, in the worst-case scenario, as contractors don't complete work, and you don't give them back their retainage, and you use that money to complete the job. I don't expect that's gonna happen with this contractor. And I really don't believe, unless, for some reason, we have an extremely wet summer, weather always plays into it, but, uh, it doesn't appear that's gonna be the case this summer.
I don't know why we want construction in July downtown. I don't know why we would want construction in July downtown.
Well, that's the habit. The sun, you're starting, they have to start within thirty days of them signing the contract. So once, once you guys approve it, accept it, and then it goes, the contract goes to contractor, then you have thirty days, and then that, three days, we have to start the project. So, um, that may be just, you know, moving material up there or something like that, but it's, it's, if you start in August, it's, you know, the plan was to get it done first thing, early in the campaign. So in July, I feel it's gonna be too early. The, the digging and all that stuff will take place in June, in my, my.
Okay.
So what do you think? Chip, what do you think about that?
I, I didn't hear the last part. I, I think you were talking about how we ended up with a, uh, July, uh, completion date.
Right, and I said that, I feel that in July, they'll be, they'll be closing up the ditches and, and do some finished work in, in, in July, in June, they'll be doing all the ditching and laying the pipe and, and handles, so that's coming out.
Right, so, uh, substance, uh, sus- uh, hey, substantial completion is defined as having the binder pavement down. So that means pretty much all the pipe work is in. And, uh, basically, the work that we would be going on would be dressing up the side of roads, lo- loam and seed, uh, maybe there's some ditching work to do, uh, but it'd be cleanup-type work. And would be certainly, uh, traffic would not be affected. And then, of course, those two roads, uh, even though they're, they're popular streets and used heavily, uh, there are some options for commuters to get around that. But, uh, at that, in July, I would expect that, um, you know, my guess is that Seth's gonna try to get the pavement down in the beginning of July, and then he's cleaning everything up.
So I have a question. So if the town doesn't pass the next, if, if they don't pass the next, you know, the next loan for the roads, then are we gonna be able to go back and put the top layer on? If the town says no, then, you know, if we say no, then we'll do the top layer, and we don't get the next bond? Are we gonna be able to go back and put that top layer on?
We'll have some D O T minutes, right?
Right.
And it's a hundred dollars every year from the D O T.
Right, eventually we'll have that. We, we have money in, in front of that, so we can move into the CIP if we need it, yes, so we can do that. Right, so the, the next bond is for more streets.
Right. What I'm saying is the town says, no, we're waiting, we need that money to finish the top layer. Now, just make it so we can still go back and finish the roads that we started. I'll just clarify.
So, Mike or Chip, and I'm sure it's in here somewhere, but, um, the bid was over, right? By thirty-four thousand, three thirty-one?
Right.
Down the bid.
The bid came in, the bid came in under our one point three five.
Right, so we're, we're over budget by thirty-four thousand, three thirty-one?
Yes.
Okay. So how much did we garnish by not doing the top layer?
So, I think Chip, you said seventy thousand dollars for the two streets for the surface pavement is estimated. Is that correct?
Correct. And so, uh, what you see on that, that, uh, that bottom table is the, uh, the bid, um, Snowman bid, essentially would go to one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand. But we've also got the, uh, proposal for the support work, for Mike to do the day-to-day monitoring, uh, which is twenty-eight-five in there, we've estimated, to give you guys a hand in, in construction administration and oversight.
So the bottom table represents the less, the less the surface did. Sorry, I mean, sorry, the bottom table, um, shows less of, of surface pavement. It's Snowman's, Snowman's reduction from table above, which includes the surface.
So it's a difference between the one, um, his bid and then the, um, yeah, okay, I see, I see. Yeah.
And then a construction lagering.
Right.
So, you know, it, it was that twenty thousand, that twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars is down from forty-one thousand five hundred, by Ted and myself, helping do the day-to-day monitoring. Justine coming up, um, once a week. So there, there's some, there's some, some paperwork that we're gonna have to fill out each day and send that down to them, and then they have to do some administrative work down in Bangor. Then we have eleven thousand, two twenty-nine for a contingency.
Yeah, that's, that's very concerning.
Yeah, it's one percent.
Because if, I mean, Chip has noted that there may be some subsurface issues. I mean, this whole thing can fall into the, in, in both scenarios.
Right, what Ted tells me, they found much of that, uh, cordwood in the crack zone, right? You're still?
Yeah.
They had to find in every form, or can.
Well, that's, that's what the concern is, so.
Even all the slime.
So Lakeview Street, you do the lake, right?
Right.
Years ago, we filled it all in.
I mean, even my hopes is on Phil Julian.
So I think, one of the other questions that I think, um, personally, I, the time between binding and surface paving. So we were into this process, good faith, and we're gonna do it all the way to binding and all the way to the surface. That's pain. My concern is, is that we're gonna end up kicking it to these points out of program. So I guess, question, and maybe we don't need to have this discussion tonight, but the reality of it is, is when does the surface paving get done? And I, if I'm hearing, Chip, and I'm sorry, Justine?
Yep, that's right.
Yep, um, sometimes you see those cycles two and three years out. So have you seen any damage and upgrades that you needed to do to the binding areas that would increase the cost for the surface areas two and three years out?
I'll take a stab at that. So the binder is basically the structural pavement course. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Justine, I think we figured two and a half inches of it on this job.
We're proposing two inches of binder course.
Two inches. And then, uh, the surface course is what's known as the wearing course. And so that takes the wear and tear of plowing and general traffic over time and doesn't affect the, uh, the more structural binder pavement. I think, um, you, you certainly have the ability and, and timing at your disposal of, of when you wanna do that. So if, um, if you wanted, you know, if, let's say the bond didn't pass, um, in subsequent town budgets, you could budget the money to put the surface pavement down. The, uh, I think you've, you've got, that's the one area that you definitely have some flexibility.
You know, because the other thing that I'm concerned about, and, and this is, has no reflection on how we maintain our road, but plowing two inches of, of car versus four inches, I would think it'd be a little more wear and tear with that.
I, I think that, that's really, uh, I think, I, I wouldn't have a concern about it. Like I said, um, and we don't have to plow roads along the coast like you guys do up here, but, um, you're, you likely, um, the activity, even if it was two or three years out, I, I think you guys are gonna be in good shape. You, that's, which is why we, we thought that the surface pavement is the likely place to get the project under budget.
I'm not really comfortable with that, are you?
I am.
Well, then.
That, that's gonna work.
Well, yeah.
I, I like my motion that we go ahead with the reduced Snowman bid.
So, if I'm okay with that motion, wherever the contract agenda is, when do we do the surface phone? This summer, after the money has been allocated.
It doesn't count that.
Or, or yearly.
You could, you could. You don't, you don't have to wait two or three years to do it. You can do it right off the bat.
People often put it, put the surface course on immediately after binder course. Just waiting can be advantageous.
But both of those roads are boggie areas. And, you know, the longer we can let it go toward frost cycle, it might be a good thing. I mean, we've got a really dry spring probably coming. Isn't Maine officially in a drought, or?
I think so, Maine is.
So, maybe, you know, wet springs, do it happen.
I just hope we're not having a, having a discussion when they find something on Lakeview Street. It's gonna kick the whole scenario. I just hope we're not having a, having a discussion when they find something on Lakeview Street, because it's gonna kick the whole scenario.
That's.
I really think that's where we're at.
And the water company and the sewer, they're all on board, not gonna be digging it up.
No, I'm not saying, no, I mean, once you guys approve it, the contact, I have a contact, they know it's in the paint, but as soon as we move forward, a smaller contact, then let them know. Like, you know, labels, water, anything they need to be known, if you don't, so, just make it approved.
Well, I have a motion to throw with the, although it's someone's bid. Do I have a second?
No.
More questions, comments?
I anticipate we're gonna have to revisit this discussion, but maybe, so, I, you know, Ron must have Chris Wall, unfortunately, but I'm okay for that, so.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to say I'm not comfortable with it at all, but it is what it is.
Yeah, it would have been terrific.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, all of us in favor? I do.
Well, you said COVID pricing, everybody needs to fix it to the airport, so excuse. I don't need time, so, but.
So, 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 yeah. So they, they've accepted the, the, um,
We did.
Reduced snowmen contract. So your next step is what?
Um, I guess what we'll do is we'll issue a notice to proceed to Seth, uh, to Snowman, and, uh, that way he can start procuring all of his, uh, subcontractors and, and secure all the materials. Um, he's begun actually to do, I, I think he's probably started that process, but needs that, that notice to proceed so to make it official. Um, the next thing would be to work with him on when the work would actually start and, uh, and coordinate that, that effort with, with the town staff so that they're ready to do the work, um, that they need to do. Um, the other thing we'll do in the background is, um, we'll start creating daily inspection report sheets and begin training Mike and Ted on, on how those are to be filled out every day. Um, I think, uh, I really think you guys are, are in a very good position. There's, there, even though the contingency is tight, um, there's some contingency planning that we've discussed that, uh, if, you know, for some reason that you, let's say you run into cordwood, um, there's a way that we can manage the work so that we keep things within budget. I, uh, one, one clarification, I, and Mike, I don't know if you need, uh, the, the, the board's approval. Um, we, we've got that proposal for the, uh, construction administration and monitoring support. Um, do you need specific authority to sign that?
Somebody shaking their head, no.
Good. That's good.
All right. Thank you for your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know it's been a, a rough process, but, uh, I think, I'm excited. I think you're gonna end up with a good product. Thanks.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number ten, personnel policy, thank you.
Yes. So we're doing Article Two, and I see Allison's on the list. Allison, you're on this. Thank you, Allison.
Hi, Allison.
Hi there.
So, so we're gonna, uh, just go through this, um, as, as, as a lot of time.
You didn't print those out again, did you?
Nope.
Oh, you did.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm kind of, okay. So just, I went through it, and anything that said board select, I changed to select board.
Thank you.
Uh, under hours, uh, two point two, point one hours of work. It says normal work, so I'm here on, on a Wednesday, uh, I'm asking to change that to Sunday and end it on Saturday. Some of these, I think it was Wednesday, a Wednesday years ago, uh, I like to go Saturday to Sunday. Uh, moving down, uh, under the police department, under M D. Talks about the police department will work in nine-hour shifts, which will consist of A L S, patrol, investigation, one hour of call, one deal, etc. Each shift, and who given holidays. So we need to, need to change this, because right now we're full-time P D, they may work in, they work in sixteen. They're here for sixteen hours, they're on duty for sixteen, they're on, on, uh, on call from midnight to eight, eight hours.
So it needs to reflect our budget and the chief's needs.
Yeah.
He should have the flexibility to staff who he wants to, just as long as you're aware of it, and then, um, they can use a bunch of friends, and unless there's something special.
Right. So I just want, you can delete the nine-hour shift or the rewards that have to go to, if it's happening, or like that, it's passed. Any, any comments on that?
Cause it always is kind of dependent on the situation, what shape they were in and to what hours they worked.
Any suggestions, Allison?
No, I don't have it in front of me, and I can't really hear you very well. I do know that when I was doing the personnel policy, um, usually police and fire have different kinds of structures for hours, and I'm not an expert on that.
Okay. So, I, I can find you one that you work at.
Right.
But.
So we need to make sure that we have, you know, set time.
Right.
Because Jimmy doesn't wanna run into a scenario where one of his officers says, well, I don't really wanna work from nine to two today or something. And that way, if there's an issue, he'll have some meat behind him, so to say, or, or maybe.
So replace, replace it, replace the nine hours from the, replace it start time at eight o'clock, eight A M, four eight hundred to midnight, and then on call from midnight to four eight hundred. Okay. Right? Um, I would have milked it, because that was, uh, how was it paid? Call out, we know, I don't pay, that, that's an old, we know that name. Um, town office employees, office hours, they changed that to seven A M, um, which has been like that over a year now. Fix that part. Uh, the overtime, it, it talks about, uh, non-salary. Um, I spoke to Andy Hamilton about this well over a year ago, and he rec, Andy Hamilton has been telling me, um, he can be about it. So he recommended that we change, uh, the town, they require a minimum of up to, it says eighty hours overtime work to be a few, a few weeks equal one hundred and twenty. He's saying forty hours. He recommended change that to forty hours.
Um, is that, what, how is that based on? Biweekly or weekly?
This is per week. I just stated your overtime.
And was that your discussion with him, or was it paid biweekly, or was that a?
Yeah, I don't think it was. I think, I think, I sent him this, he looked at this and said, it's forty. So maybe you can keep it out, because it is, it is bi-week, or bi-month. Um, so we need to keep that. Uh, he, he, he was wondering if we should just remove the comp time, I mean, that note, or we can go through that, discuss it. Uh, I know, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing for our public works department where they, where they, you know, they plow all the way along, and they use their comp time, uh, this time of year, or the spring, or the summertime, we can sometimes, sorry, the summer, to, uh, take the afternoon out. Or, or, so I think, I think we should keep it.
Was this rational because they're being paid overtime?
Yes.
So it's perceived as. Being paid twice.
It's overtime, comp time is eight hours overtime, because they work overtime, you get, otherwise we can overtime.
Right. And if they're not, so are we doing one or the other? Is it in lieu up? So they getting, are they getting overtime and overtime paycheck plus comp time?
No, no. They get forty, if they work fifty hours, you get, uh, for example, Ted, Ted will work forty hours and ten hours of comp time. And it's paid, that comp time is eight hours time and a half, though, or it's eight hours and four.
So it's that comp time that's not reflected in his paycheck? It's just carried as?
No, it's paid as comp time.
But he doesn't, it's not actually paid.
That's correct.
That eats any of it.
That's true. That's correct. He's taking it off.
So then he just gets that off when he chooses it.
That's correct. So, so, so next, if the next week he wants to work thirty hours, he takes ten hours of comp time.
Cause the public works is the only one that's.
That's correct.
With any job kind of.
Right. Other than, uh, the P D, uh, the police department, if, if they work on the poultry laundery or anything like that, and they get off, then I give them that, they off. If, if they're salary or what, oh.
Really?
Right.
Sounds like it's working.
Um, so turning the page to page eleven, then, uh, same paragraph with Amy. I believe that is it for the Article Two. Is everything else, uh, been kept in?
So is it around the comp time, Mike, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that's fully satisfying too, isn't it? I mean, I don't particularly wanna mess with that.
No, they like it. No, they like it. It actually helps us out, you know, if, if there's, if there's not much to do on a Friday afternoon, and they wanna cut out a four thirty, then they let you know, they gone.
As long as they're not, they pay twenty.
No, I, I think we should keep it. So, so that's it for those changes, and I'll, I'll, um, I wish you'd want to give this, the paragraph of the, uh, start time and end time, then you can, you got it in your books, you got that on our book.
Thank you, Allison, for your help with these. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Allison.
Are you ready for a new project?
I'm ready anytime, but I don't think you need me.
We always need you.
We need the support.
Thank you. Okay. Eleven, the junction walk weight containers, first discussion.
Right. So I just thought, uh, you know, Deion mentioned it last meeting, that we should have this on the agenda, and, um, at the time I knew the agenda, there wasn't like, I'll need a agenda. So I said, oh, perfect opportunity to start, start a discussion on this, um, and what, what we feel needs are. So, you know, I, I just wanna, just wanna mention, though, like we do at the junction, we get to think about free go park, right? We're, we're talking about, we're helping free go parks a little bit, so.
So we get that trash cans at one time, or order the phone and take them all.
At the junction?
Yeah.
Because local people were leaving their trash there, not just locals, everybody, they just set it aside again rather than drive. And so it was always a mess, but people.
Birds, rats, and mammals, uh, and it was everywhere.
There weren't a lot of them, it was bags and bags and bags.
And the people coming off the lake, you know, taking it off their bowls and just leaving it there.
So, but people still leaving their trash is the, so, at that time, how frequent was it being collected?
I wasn't here. So, so when I started, there, there was no trash cans there. So Jack, Jack told me this, everything you just said, but Jack told me it was happening. So, um, the trash can, so they're removing. And, um, there hasn't, there has been some people coming, come in, and local people asked to go back, because they issued it quite a bit, you know, have the trash cans there. Um.
And a lot of people pick it over there, the rest of you are still, you know, it'd be nice to have, but they'll pick it, they can just take the trash and throw it away.
So that there's a sign, and there's just carrying and carrying out.
Well, nobody reads the sign anymore.
Well, I know, but I must see a lot of trash everywhere.
I don't think we should put it over there again. They were a huge, huge mess. Animals were in them, birds were in them, gathering trash everywhere, carrying and carrying out, we can bring stuff, we're picking it, take them home.
Well, obviously that hasn't worked.
I don't think there's much trash left there.
I haven't seen much of it.
I go over there quite a bit, with kids, the playground, and I don't see bags of trash there.
I, I, I'm a, I'm a little trash bag, I'm a little stupid with your.
I've heard a number of.
Have you heard complaints, Ken?
Yeah, the people, like I said, people just made an ask on that, so, local people. And I explained what, what you just said.
Yeah, I heard.
So when, when the barrels were there, how, how did we empty it, or who emptied it?
I believe Sean, I believe, wasn't Sean responsible for that, Richard?
I can't remember.
But it just became overwhelming.
I think you'd have to do it every single night, seven days a week.
So.
I was saying, well, maybe it's something we should look at, not somebody every day.
Well, yeah, or, you know, you could do it like on a trial basis.
Right.
And if it quickly becomes a problem, then you pull.
And so we're thinking of calling the way to work.
How about, like, the guy that's mowing the lawns, or someone mows lawns?
Not if you get it.
Take it, when they're not quick.
I think, oh, the issues, I mean, if we do that, obviously we're gonna drive across them. I guess, I would ask this. Is there any way that we can find an offsetting opportunity with us? I know when we signed Sean's contract with him, we were all pretty clear that we wouldn't evaluate any possible opportunities. So with that, I'm maybe looking at a different business model for Tommy's thing. I'm not throwing that out there, I'm not saying that's what we're gonna end up, because I don't wanna give you a game tomorrow morning that you don't want this contract. And I know how these things get around town quickly, so, but, and that's not what I, I, I just think, I mean, I wanna work with him. Is there an opportunity? We talked about, you know, looking at recycling, I remember you mentioned that a couple of times during budget last year. You know, I, I don't know, but all I know is, and I think, you know, we wanna make sure that, I, personally, I think we need to make sure that those areas look as groomed and, and as well kept as possible, and we continue to promote the area.
You can't leave trash at, at, really many state parks. You can't leave it at any of the state beaches on the coast. Every single place is carrying in, carrying out, because people abuse it. And, and that's exactly what they do, is they drop off their trash and leave them camp, throw two bags of trash, and that's the trash can.
So, I, I'm, I mean, leave the trash at, track scratch. So the dumpsters, the store next door, or outside my window, and I see campus pulling in from, and you know they're camping, they pull in and they look around, they pick the dumpster up, and threw the trash in, and you're like.
They do that to school, too.
Yeah.
So, that's better than the others. Right, right.
But they can take it home.
Um, if we do, if we are on a trial basis, I can recommend covers. Instead of just opening fifty-five yard grounds, I don't know what they work for.
I don't know. Can we get one of those mini containers, not the big ones, but the mini ones?
Mini dumpster ones?
Yeah. That we could empty more frequently rather than just a, a barrel. And, you know, and that's gonna come with some costs, and again, you know, it's only two bucks on there, because, I mean, Jen is right, I mean, we're gonna get the volume. So the question is, can we, you know, address the volume issue if we're gonna change, if we're gonna continue to?
I mean, we have the trash downtown still, we have those blast lines with this, and those are gross. You walk by those, there are maggots climbing out everywhere, and it's disgusting, and people, you see them pull it, I'm at the border, I'm alive. And people pull in, jump out with their bag of trash, and just put it there. So unless we can train people to be decent human beings, I don't wanna, I just wanna keep dealing with their trash.
So.
I didn't tell you we're gonna solve it, no?
Right, it's a discussion, no, it's a, it's a discussion. And I, and I can check on a mini, a mini dumpster? I can talk to Sean and see what he knows.
Then there'll be TVs and bodies. Mini fridges.
What?
About cameras?
Bodies, there'll be bodies in the downtown.
Cameras?
No, we have the game cameras.
Or a sign that says we have one.
Okay, may I start with that?
Mine's the bathroom's over there, so we're going to hotel together, though. Do they, do they have locking toilet paper holders and all, do you know?
I don't know.
I'm just noticing you can buy those locks pretty reasonable, like ten or eleven bucks. But I've seen people walk out of there, taking all the toilet paper.
Really?
Oh, yeah, I've done that before, we heard that. I've seen, I saw one girl do it.
You're here too, at the museum?
Museum too.
Cause we're sort of on a black market last year.
They do. So I don't know, it's something to look at, locking it?
So.
Locking the toilets?
Um, yes. This one, this one, I might get it over the place, it's some kind of grant, so I'm, I'm kind of working on that behind these means, kind of. The photograph was a good one, I'm trying. I'm, I need some guidance, I saw an email, I'm trying to think about where I left, left it, so I open this. On that, I don't.
Okay, the management's report.
Good, so, uh, you have a letter from the D M L. It's me, it's me, uh, it was visiting you a couple of weeks ago. And how they want to update you more often. Um. Moose Tech Enterprises, which is basically a cable, cable company, local cable company. Want to put in a fiber optic communication stand or equipment. Um, at the school bus turnaround by the bridge at Wilson Bridge, Wilson Street. Um, they're asking permission to do that in the town. And that's going to supply, um, the wrong bridge area to fiber and to lower Wilson area. So similar to the South Green Street installation box, is what, is what he's telling us. But just want permission to put it there, in his town land, and we only use it for our snowplow and school bus turnaround.
Do you need a filter? Go ahead.
We have three agreements, that one over there.
Do we have what?
An agreement, resident agreement.
Where?
With the one on Green Street.
I'm not going to cross one.
I felt some of them, just, some have a record.
I believe they have a son or not. That's close, it's, it's the record of assembly.
I, I'm assuming we make it safe, but.
Right. Right, same, same agreement, just, you know, liability.
I don't remember this well.
Yeah. So, you want to do that? Um, do you, do you want to deal with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Too many dark and white.
Oh, you want internet, huh?
I think we're going on that one.
Yeah, we, we do. Yeah.
I'll make one too.
Second. All of the questions?
Well, I wrote that neighborhood there, not to interrupt you, but are they going to do something with that bridge out there?
Um, I know there, engineers are looking at it.
For one of those new style bridges?
I don't know what kind of bridge, but I know they're looking.
Cause I keep getting hammered already, cause people think it's ours, but it's not the town. Warehouse.
Warehouses. Right. And, and I, I've talked to someone at Warehouse there, Andrew.
Yeah, well, well, that, move back.
So I talked to him last fall, and he said that if the engineer is looking at it. He knows the concern. Um, uh, we have received one scholarship application so far, for the primary class, and, and that season, right? So many will, guys will have to decide how you want to do that. We have one so far, and a contractor does come for it, we guys have come for, help me that to, to, to keep reminding the students about it. One so far. Um, Matt, fire chief Matt, wants to know about the disaster training date, when you want to do this. And on one evening, we talked about disaster enrollment, a little bit. Um, Tom Caprero is going to come up and give us some training, uh, about, about a training disaster, training for groundman disaster. And, uh, it's going to be one evening for a couple hours.
Anyone to know what?
When you're about to do that.
Well, I would think they would set it up when it's good for them, and come to them.
I mean, I can offer it for anybody.
Um, will this be like sirens and lights and all? If, if it is, I think we ought to give people heads down.
Yeah, I don't know, I can check on that.
No, it's just people talk, don't you?
Oh, it is?
I think it's just.
I'm trying to know.
Teach us how to follow.
Probably should do it, after town meeting.
Well, I was thinking you have to, like, please.
More on action too, it's playing a different board.
So I have to do step on there.
Okay, board, not boy.
Um, just something on public works crew, uh, for the recent weather, the way it is, they removed most of the plow equipment. Uh, they are, they have begun to sand and repaint the wheels of the trucks, we take them off and sand them down, and it's, it's dear, and the truck bodies have been all pressure washed and all the gearing, it's, it's been oiled for the summer. Uh, I was over there this morning, and they were doing, uh, the new vehicle body this morning. Uh, the roofs, the roofs of the structures at the warp have all been tingled, and if you noticed that or not?
I did, I did that.
We did, alright. Um, we had some downtime, there's availability in the warm weather a couple of weeks ago, and I think they can get this stuff done, so we stripped them and, and the new fuels up on those.
Good.
And, um, we looked at those too, and, and, and other ones, so. And also, at some point, uh, when it's warmer enough, I talked to Ted about repainting the restroom building, you can tighten out. Loosen that up a little bit, cause like Dino said, we're, we're going to be under a microscope here very soon. And we haven't already, but either freshen that up. Um, the chief, uh, Carr and I, police chief, uh, this city worked on updating the parking, parking orders, uh, into signs. And for downtown, uh, Prick, Prick and Matlin area. Um, we talked about adding some parking spots. Uh, coming down from the school, from, from the Kennedy East. So the school to Scott Patrick, Pennsylvania, this opportunity for four or five spots there. I contacted the D O T today about that, and they said, have that, one person parking spot, see that still free. So we're going to do that this year. And we talked about, uh, some timed parking we do well, uh, twenty or thirty minute parking down by the drugstore. Uh, to keep those, uh, available for, for, for the, uh, elderly, the, the studio. I did mention, uh, uh, handicap parking with the D O T today, and he said, that's, we have to make sure we're A, we're, we're A D A compliant. And to do that, that, he said, you may want to just keep your, keep your parking spots, you have an invisible parking spot, and keep those as timed, instead of going the A D A. So, um, you have, I believe, you have an email that gives them about that. Okay, some suggestions, and that, that's a working document.
That outlined it pretty well.
Yes, it does, yeah. So it's a working document, and, uh, I sent, give an email out now, updating them, that I've talked to D O Ts, so I see them probably, they will catch up soon.
Yeah, I would do it, too, if he wants to make something official with his plans, and bring it to a next meeting, so we can get it.
Right, exactly.
Be done.
In the, in the, in the, in the ones.
Yeah, they do have to be comfortable.
Right. Um, I started, uh, the review and updating of the, of the job descriptions, uh, that's going very well with, with Allison's help. So that is, I've been trying to get one a day completed, so I get those in, I can hand those out to all the employees, and make sure that they understand their job description. Um, you have a copy of the letter of support that Bonnie wrote.
That Bonnie wrote.
But it was.
By the time.
So he said outdoor alliance, uh, had to come from the chair of the board, um, so that is, they're applying for a grant. And that grant is the, uh, community project funding grant that, uh, Congressman Jared Goldman has introduced. And he, there's more information on this, that I handed out to you, so if I call on this, hopefully that we can move forward with, um, um, getting some matching funds for something that we might be interested in in the future. And, uh, the deadline is April fourteenth. So when I called, I spoke to his office, uh, Monday, she said that, yeah, they didn't give much notice, and, um, so you, you don't have all your ducks in a row, so to speak, to apply for this, and you just can't like, where to.
What is, is, so their application is already filled out?
Yes.
We just already signed the letter?
Letter of support.
Okay.
That's all, right, so, so, I mean, I saw this grant, I passed it on to the, the, um, the alliance, the bicycle alliance. And I passed it on to Snowbird Club, hoping they might get to jump onto it as well. Um, but we, we cannot jump onto it right now, and I'll sneak you for another going. Um, so she said that, the person I spoke to said that there, there was three other town managers that had calls, and, and with the same idea. And, uh, they had the same, you know, they, they don't have their, everything in the world, but she said, there's more. This is a pilot project, and there's more programs to come, and ballpark figures for matching grants are a hundred thousand dollars for a million dollars. So we want to, we want to get moving on this, and, uh, some one, and maybe after town meeting, you can, you can come up with a committee, um, for new building, and study it, and move forward some way. When it comes up again, we'll be ready. I think so.
So Mike, it, disagreeing with what you provided us, it kind of appears like, and this may not be what they're up to, but. It, it kind of appears like they're headed back towards congressional earmarks, like they used to do.
Yes.
And they get away with those, but it's kind of following the same pattern.
Right.
I'm just curious.
Like, so, so.
Is any of that mentioned?
So, and, and, you are correct, so in, uh, Congressman Goldman's district. Uh, he will, he will review and accept ten, uh, applications, only ten of the district. But, you know, I, I feel that the Moose Tech Alliance has, has a pretty good, uh, chance at it. Uh, they're working with, um, the Cleveland, and, uh, they should have this all wrapped up very soon. And, you know, I mean, the opportunity for, for, for cities and towns to do this is out of the picture, in my opinion, because it's, it was such a short notice, where these small grants, or small applications can wrap it up quickly, get in, so.
Are you on the email list, to be notified from next round, or?
Uh, this, this, this getting to me from M and A, when that was, uh, contacted. And, I believe that is all I have in my management report.
Thank you. Any questions, I found that tonight?
Yeah, do you find out anything more about the care thing, that the sound thing?
Uh, I was on a call with the P C, E C, um, I forget what day it was, but, might have been Monday. Um, and it's still, still nothing, it came from, um, Senator King's office, it's still waiting for more information. How, how we spend that. Um, that hundred and fifty-nine, a hundred and sixty dollars, we still wait for that. We might use that, get the structure, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, other comment? Tom?
I have a few things I'd like to add.
I just.
It's a minute, it's a minute, uh.
Uh. Something trash pick up. This contract, we have, uh, well, the town has been contracted that if they drop a bag or splits, the garbage goes on the street, it's supposed to pick it up.
I don't, I don't believe it's anywhere in, in the contract.
Uh, because I, I've, I've witnessed this a few times already, and they take it up out of the garbage can, and the, the bag rips, it falls on the ground, they leave it, and it just blows in the woods. Uh, so I think maybe we should have that written in the contract where, you know, they shovel it up. Or, or even sometimes the birds, you know, the, the lid blows off or something, and the birds get in there and tear it up. Uh, I'm sure everybody's ever seen this before. Uh, it's one thing, um, as far as the, the other thing with the people dumping trash in the town trash can. Uh, we had a similar problem from the town that I lived in, uh, before I moved here. And, um, we issued a fine of, uh, we started off with, uh, five hundred dollars. And, um, not that, occasionally, a, a police officer sees somebody do that, they get a fine. You can hand out two or three of those fines, you won't have any more problem like that, because the word spreads around with the question. That's just an idea. Um, I was wondering also, do we have any influence with the, the, uh, state on paving these, uh, Prickham and?
So, um, Prickham Matlin was on the, um, work plan, be done this summer, or is that that scratch?
Got scratched.
Mm-hmm, neither scratched. And I think we also have an email, and, 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 and again, during that P C, E C meeting, um, they talked about the infrastructure, um, bill that may be coming, or coming to, to ask all of us. Um, I asked about the road, and Senator King's office, uh, E D Smith is her name, she, she's, uh, um, works at his office, she said, that was the topic of this, so, it's all.
Okay, and, uh, the, uh, the only other thing I was, uh, I was wondering about, have, uh, have town given up on the TIP program, and not slowed it down by people, but. Uh, seems to me if we had that TIP in, in place now, within a couple of years now, right? Two years ago, that was proposed, then, we would have had extra money to do this road, that, that probably would have already worked out.
I don't believe there's anything in the world.
And that money couldn't have been used for roads anyway.
It could.
I don't think so.
Some of it could have.
Excuse me?
Some of it could have, there was, there was specific infrastructure limits for it.
Right.
But, I mean, there were parameters around whether or not it should be used for these two roads, but Ken, but when the engineers did their presentation, one of the first suggestions that they made, and their recommendation, was, uh, Ken. Remember that one? So.
Well, he, he couldn't use the money directly. Rob Peter and Pay Paul, in, in certain, certain sense, I just was wondering if, if, if any.
It's, it's certainly.
I, I, I don't understand why this is why this town voters, because it's good, I think, it's a great program. Um, but, anyway, I was just wondering.
Thank you. This is there?
Yep.
Thank you. John, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I just want to congratulate you for approving the bid to reconstruct the, uh, two roads. I know something about road reconstruction from my family business, and I think the town will be well served, uh, by this project, it's pretty exciting. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Where's the cake?
Eddie has a public comment. Here and done. What's on your mind, Janet, you got anything?
I got a lift.
Um, maybe I should have you laugh.
So, I have to walk back about a daycare task force, and nobody's been on that. But I, I really think we need to do it. Um, is anybody here remotely interested, or?
I definitely am.
Wanted to talk to them, I think you will organize that.
Well, I mean, a task force is usually appointed by town officials, right?
I think, well, you think it needs, you think it needs to be that formal?
I don't know, I mean. I don't know, I mean. I'm not sure. And you guys have never, I know there's been committees appointed by boards in the past. You know, like economic development, at one point, they were all appointed, um, to the slot board. I don't know, you know, Rocky, how they usually do it? You've been here for a little bit, there was a recycling committee, and then there's, uh, there was a committee when they built this building, a building committee, I mean. You know, there, there's been different committees, yeah, and do they usually try to solicit interest with people? They usually try to do that first, and then if it doesn't work, then.
Force them.
I didn't wanna say that, but. It means like, you know, the committees that you have in the town, you know, your planning board, and your, you know, they put those out and ask people to submit, you know, to be on those committees, that's what they just propose.
So Janet, if I remember correctly, I think it was in the minutes, two or three minutes ago, we talked about it. And I think we agreed by consensus that it is a private order.
Then it need to ask?
It's private order.
Right, but meanwhile, we don't do, I mean. Should we advertise looking for task force, or should we? I mean, I don't know how it generally works, but I just know a task force put together by towns can have a lot more credibility than.
So can you have a task force, can, can the municipal have a task force?
I don't know, I've never played against one, that way.
So what, how can the other, how is the other daycare organized?
How is what?
The other daycare organized, is it for profit?
Yes, it's private business, that one, yeah.
Probably should check the legal scheme. Or at least invite them to be on the task force, because I don't know if there's any laws around the town competing with the private business.
I don't think that we necessarily, the task force. No, I don't think you. Has to build a daycare or operate a daycare, I think that we need to make some opportunities for daycare, and.
I mean, we, we agree with that, but, but secondly, what you don't understand is that it's that the town is moving in the daycare business by putting this task force or committee together. There just needs to be very clear that upfront, you know, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it, however we want to move it forward, I just think, makes it fun with the latter of.
Because there's gonna be some opportunities for money, but the care's money, if it's gonna be in that perimeter, either the county or the town, there's gonna be a lot of money there that may be able to.
That's.
And maybe just be need that the task force would administer, you know, something like that, obviously, I'm not just starting a daycare. Um, and also, there's the, the tip from the county, that they're working with the developers for the mountain. Twenty percent of that tip is gonna be at the discretion of the county commissioners. And it can, and it can be related, I talked to, um, Jim White today, daycare can be considered related. Obviously, they're gonna have a couple hundred employees up here. Um, so there might be, you know, the first couple of years is not leaving much money, but, you know, after that, it might be some money that can help sustain some operation.
I mean, I'm not closing it off, I think it's an absolute private order, but, we just need to figure out how we organize.
Yeah, we need to be clear. I don't know that we need to be clear, but we need to do it. Do something.
So we need to, we don't.
Yeah, I just, uh, and I'm not, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench, I just, whatever we do, just be, be a guidance on it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just, I just wanna keep going with it. If there's gonna be this money available, we need to be tapped into it.
And maybe it's something like, we got two daycares now, and, you know, the town gives X for this one, and X for this one, or something, is that?
Or, yeah, people apply for it, and you can also eliminate that money, you can say, this, this, this certain amount of money used for training. The people want their complete training, they can apply for it and get reimbursed for their training, there's a lot of different ways to use it, that will help them. Um, right.
So basically, I, I check the legal with any kind of conflict, with the town, and.
With, this is one clear clearance.
Yeah. Let's just second one. So, does everybody know that Friday, this Friday, the, um, tip agreement with the county will be on their website? You didn't know that?
No.
Okay, um, and, and I complained to Jim today about how they haven't kept us in the loop at all. There should have been somebody here doing the presentation at some point, you know, they should be communicating with you, and you communicate with us, but we're totally in the dark. You know, if I didn't have a friend reading everything on the L U B C page, I wouldn't know, but anyway, Friday, it's gonna be on the website. And then the twentieth, at their regular meeting. Um, they're going to have their public hearing, eight thirty in the morning, and then, um, they're gonna vote on it, any commissioners. You know, that will be voting on that.
She talked about the tip itself, too.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
It was put together that quickly.
So it was voting on the tip on the twenty?
Twenty, yeah, but it will be available to read this Friday. So, and when I said something to the effect of, how come you're not keeping us in the loop? He said, well, we're here at our meeting, you guys can come. So. I guess maybe we should think about participating with the, uh, county commissioners more or something.
Zoom meetings? Are they doing Zoom meetings, sometimes?
They do in Zoom, yeah, except if I get mad, they shut them off.
Yeah, cause didn't they just have a big legal issue around there?
Yeah.
I, I haven't heard, I've never met with the party, so.
Well. That's it.
Yeah?
Um, how about the, uh, transfer station road, is that anything we're gonna bring up again?
What about it?
Well, I, I was kinda wondering if we have the big vote, we coming up, we should ask the town, I think that, if you know, they. Where's the transfer station up there, and, and road where it's, and, 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 maybe we should ask the town if they think we should take the road over, or if we shouldn't. I just think, you know, there's always a lot to talk about it, and, and there's arguments, and I just think we should ask the town, the thousands, what, what do they want us to do, what do they want? Now, do we wanna take this top rover over, or, or do we wanna fight them about it in years?
I think we should build a road through the town garage parking lot, right to the transfer station, take care of that. And let everybody else figure out the rest of the road on their own. Because we're not obligated to provide road to the, um, recycling, we contracted Sean to provide recycling, but it's up to him to provide the road.
And even if we take it over, it's not gonna get any better, cause we can't fix the roads we have.
Right.
You're gonna live on the gravel.
You know, if these property owners, there's, there's road associations all over town, I paid for ones on the highway. You know, I'm sure other people paid for them, and.
Not me.
Everywhere in town. You know, we take one road association, we're gonna, we're gonna have twenty others knocking this door.
Yeah, but we don't have a transfer station, and, and other stuff like that on the other, on the other roads.
But we can, like I said, we can build a road, we don't have to. Anything else, too?
No, I just wanted to throw an idea up here, so.
And I wanted to shoot it down. That's all. Richard.
Uh, Tom wrote mine up, but I'm gonna read that just for a second, Prickham Matlin. Uh, even though they said that I'm gonna do it, you know, we're saying, Sweeney Gill gets degrees, I'm, but if we draft a letter, or, I don't even know if people write letters anymore, email. And maybe if we sent one once a week or something, like on an automatic cycle. Yeah, they might get a second hand from us, you know, that might, was one step closer to the top of our list, cause that road is just horrendous. Even if they did a, you know, a skin code to appease everybody, at least from like Everlast Hill to the center of town or something.
After that, we are meeting on Monday, and that was the draft, and we're then not going to look at that?
We were, I was gonna mention that.
Yeah, there was a meeting with the D O T, D O T.
Well, whatever, uh, you had a meeting with or down, maybe just send them an email and say we brought it up again at the meeting, and say that's, you know, a high priority.
Anything else, Richard?
No, it's not, but.
Janet? Me, then. Okay. If we have no other business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Richard May.
Don't leave.
No, Janet, second it? All those in favor? Yeah, stay a minute, please, and, um.
Another one.
Good night.